City Council meeting of the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for our study session on Monday, July 21, 2025. We have two items that we're going to study tonight. Item number one is the city plan status update and item number two is the draft ballot language for a charter amendment concerning the clerk and treasurer. And we will start our meeting as we typically do with public comment. I have one person in the public signed up today to speak and when I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium, give us your first name and last name, if you'd please spell your last name, we'll try to get it right in the formal record. And then tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge and then tell us what study session item you're going to talk about tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Kathleen Martell, M-A-R-T-E-L-L. I live, work and play in Wheat Ridge. And I am here to talk about the city plan draft presentation. And I'm here because I was a member of the city plan steering committee and I'm here to give my support for it. It was a great process, just over a year from when we first started. And we had our last steering committee meeting and we reviewed the executive summary and dug into the plan a little bit. And I was so impressed with the evolution of the of the plan and how so many ideas were merged into this one document. After reviewing the final draft at our meeting, there were a couple of things from that meeting and our conversations and just reflecting on it that I wanted to share with council because they really stuck out to me. One of them was the idea of the patchwork quilt. And I think that that is the new way for us to say that we were just quirky. And I think it's so important that we remember that we don't want to lose that quirkiness. The next one was the idea of peaceful coexistence. And we have a lot of development happening now and we have a lot of history and strong feelings about our history in this community. And I think the idea of peaceful coexistence and how it threads through this document shows that both of these ideas are important and need to be at the front of mind. The next thing was just the implementation of all of these of this plan and so many other plans that are in progress right now in the city like keeping Anderson Pool of Float and the Parks and Rec Plan. We've got a lot of implementation in front of us and this framework will help with the tactical known and unknown decisions ahead of us. At the end, we talked about transparency and accountability. And in that, we talked a lot about not just the tactical implementations, but what happens next and how can the city be accountable and how can we as community members hold the city accountable? And one idea that came up in my small group discussion was keeping the steering committee members and the neighborhood champions that were brought together. I think Ella said there were over 100 neighborhood champions and all of the city advocates who gave input at the open houses and other ways along the way involved. I don't know what that looks like, but keeping those people engaged. I know anyone who gave input on this is going to be excited, or I think will be excited, to hear as things happen and to celebrate those wins and to share that input with their networks and their neighborhoods. Lastly, community engagement. And like I said, the steering committee has been seated for over a year. We had so many open houses, so many surveys. And I talked to people that live in the metro area but not in Wheat Ridge about some of these processes and what I'm involved in. And people are blown away with the amount of input that we solicit from our people. And I know there are times when I hear people talk about survey fatigue, but I would much rather have that than the people who I talk to and they have no idea what's going on in their city and they are never asked for input. And I just want to thank our city for being so engaged with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speakers in the hall signed up to speak. Let me check and see if we have anybody online. Nobody online. So we will move beyond our public's right to speak and go to our first agenda item. And this is the city plan status update. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. We're excited to be in front of you this evening. As the speaker just mentioned, this has been a long and I think fruitful process. And we're very excited about the outcomes. And we're here tonight to present you with a final draft and ask for any input you may have. But Ellis Stevie is going to present that. We have our consultant team here as well. She'll introduce them. But Ella?
All right. Thank you for having us here. So I'm Ellis Stevie and I have with us from CCB, Eric, Amy and Matt Ingles. So we're excited to be here after many conversations to unveil the full plan and it's not quite final form. So tonight, we're going to give, I'm just going to give a brief project overview, just a quick refresher on our process. Then I'll give an overview of the draft plan itself. It'll be a very high level one. Don't worry, I'm not going to go through very much of that, you know, 160 pages tonight. We did get a request from a few council members last meeting to do a deeper dive into our mobility, like how mobility is in the plan. So we will do that. And then we're going to talk a little bit about other parts of implementation that really are going to impact this group and wrap up with next steps. So to start with our project overview, as you all know, we've been working on this plan since early 2024. So we've had four phases of engagement and each of those had in-person and online opportunities for input. We've had six meetings with our steering committee and we've also had our group of neighborhood champions, which are 100 community members who signed up to have a bigger role in getting the word out. So now we are in the review phase of the draft plan. So this meeting is the last of our scheduled discussions and our online comment period wraps up tomorrow. So assuming we don't have any big issues to resolve from this review period, we're hoping to be back to start adoption in later in August and coming back before council in early September. So hopefully you've all had a chance to read through the executive summary and familiarize yourself with the draft plan. I'm going to give just an overview of the structure and high level content of the plan. So as a reminder, the city plan as our comprehensive plan will shape the future of Wheat Ridge over the next 15 or so years. So it articulates our path forward based on what the city wants to be in the future. So in your in your review of the plan, I'm guessing that there weren't any major surprises. You've seen most of this content over the course of our previous conversation. So the plan is organized into three parts. The first one, part one, is welcome to the city plan. So in this first part, we define what a plan needs to do to be successful. It needs to get the big things right. It needs to plan for what's known and it needs to create a decision-making framework for what's unknown. Part one also looks at where we are today. A few things that I want to call out about that. So younger people are moving into Wheat Ridge. So the average age has decreased in recent years. In that transition, we've also seen higher incomes. At the same time, home prices have been going up in Wheat Ridge, as they are everywhere in the metro region. And they're actually rising faster than incomes. So that means that the historic affordability that Wheat Ridge has enjoyed for much of its history has been eroding. We've also seen an increase in the number of jobs in the city and in the city's sales tax revenue, which provides a substantial portion of the city's budget. At the same time, the city has been working to modernize in several ways. And one important one is community engagement. And it's great to hear from Kathleen on that because that really is reinforcing the work and the resources we put towards that. So by creating that community engagement specialist and the neighborhood planner roles, the city has been able to get a much better understanding of resident sentiment. And we've also been able to respond to that sentiment. One thing through all of that that we have heard is that Wheat Ridge is ready to invest in our future. So where do we want to go exactly? While people want the city to continue to look and feel like Wheat Ridge, they're also ready to tackle some of the challenges that have been facing the city. So those can be summarized by three goals: modern infrastructure, thoughtful place making and thriving businesses and neighborhood. So then how does this plan get us there? As a start, it establishes our core values, our planning principles and our planning priorities. Okay, so our core values are our shared beliefs that articulate who we are as a community. They are independent-minded, inclusive and forward-looking. Our planning principles are criteria to evaluate decisions and ensure that those decisions reinforce our values. They articulate what we care about most. So they are to serve a mix of incomes, to preserve our patchwork quilt, to focus on sustainability, and to strengthen the city's fiscal position. Then we have our planning priorities. So these are those big moves that we need to get right for the community to become the best version of itself. They are an improved retail and business environment, 38th Avenue as Wheat Ridge's main street, a network of pedestrian and bicycle facilities across the city, and proactive infrastructure management. In part two, our character and development vision, the plan explains how the community would like to shape and reinforce the city's character into the future. So to do this, it first articulates what we are trying to achieve. The desired outcomes detailed in the plan are allowing us to evolve while continuing to feel like Wheat Ridge, peaceful coexistence between new development and existing neighborhoods, improved connectivity and access, and just generally making places that are great. So there are several ways that the city can work towards those outcomes. Based on the conversations that we had in our engagement phases, the plan focuses on tools that city staff can hone and develop. So the plan organizes these tools into four categories. What uses are appropriate? Form tools that dictate the size, shape and placement of what we build. Going places tools that impact how we get around. And then staying places tools that make a place somewhere you want to stop and spend time. So we already use a lot of these tools. I know this group has discussed many of them with planning staff. So the city plan is really just providing an opportunity to hone many of the tools that we already use to better align development outcomes with what the community wants to see. The plan also illustrates how these tools might look if implemented in different locations in Wheat Ridge. So the illustrations on this slide show the focus areas that we've talked about in previous phases. Okay, so other than those illustrations, how do we apply these tools in Wheat Ridge? The plan explains that how we apply tools is based on context. In this case, context means our place types and our street types. Part two details how the use form going places and staying places tools would be applied in different contexts. So we're going to talk about those a little bit more in a few minutes. But first, we're going to finish this overview. So part three is creating our future and that brings us back to those three goals that will help us become the best version of ourselves: modern infrastructure, thoughtful place making, and thriving businesses and neighborhoods. So based on everything we've just talked about, so that's our values, priorities and principles from part one, and our character and development vision from part two, based on all of that, these three goals organize all the strategies and actions needed to bring this plan to life. So we'll get into some of those in a minute, too. So that all gives us direction for planning for what we know and for getting the big things right. But what about that third piece, planning for the unknown? So this is where we're going to turn back to our core values and our planning principles. They informed all of the content of this plan, but they'll also provide that decision-making framework for the future. So over the 15-year horizon of this plan, things will happen that we just can't anticipate now. COVID is a really good example of that. I guarantee that no plan adopted in 2015 anticipated a pandemic in five years. So I think we all agree that we hope nothing like that is in the wings for us. But I'm sure there will be something that we just can't possibly think of yet. And in those cases, the core values and the planning principles can provide a way to evaluate unexpected conditions, whatever they are, against the known values and principles of the community. So the plan includes this worksheet here that helps us evaluate future decisions. So it includes several questions to get at how decisions do or don't align with each of our articulated values and principles. Now, not every decision we make will align with every single core value and every single planning principle. Some may support, you know, a few of them more than others. But overall, we do want to make sure that our collective kind of cumulative choices strike a balance and keep us moving in a direction that supports all of our values and principles. So coming out of this worksheet, we wouldn't have like a very clear like yes, no. It's more intended to be a structure to help us have conversations that keep us honest to what the community told us matters. Okay, so as I mentioned, last time we met, we had a request from councilors Halteen and Hoppy to provide a little more information on how mobility shows up in the plan. So I'm going to do a little bit of a deeper dive on that now. So we've very consistently heard, including from this group, that mobility is an important topic. And that's really reflected in the plan. So if you recall that we had those four planning priorities, two of them are really closely related to this. So the network of bicycle and pedestrian facilities priority has this mobility framework, which illustrates the complete network that we want to work toward. So this network is built off the bicycle and pedestrian master plan and also what we heard from both the city plan, the process and the let's talk conversations before that, and also input from staff, from our steering committee and council and planning commission. So this map helps us figure out how each piece of street in Wheat Ridge fits into this bigger network, which helps us figure out what treatments or tools will be appropriate in any given place. So as I mentioned in our draft overview, the plan includes those four sets of tools. The last two are what we want to look at for our streets and our sidewalks. So first are going places tools. These are the different treatments for our streets and sidewalks that impact how we get around. The plan gives direction for what tools are appropriate in different contexts based on both the mobility map on the previous page and on this street type designation shown here. So these tools are grouped by mode of travel and they include treatments for pedestrians, bicyclists, drivers and also transit. Since we know how important it is for folks to be able to get around safely and conveniently, whether they're driving, biking, walking, taking the bus, or anything else you can think up, we want to prioritize the best combination of going places tools that reflects how that street needs to function as part of this mobility framework. And then if there's any right of way or budget left, we can think about what we're calling our staying places tools. Okay, so staying places tools are those elements that are not exclusively but are mostly between the curb and the buildings that make us want to stop and stay a while. So you can see some examples listed here: street furniture, lighting, on-street parking and street trees. So in most places in the city, as I mentioned, we first figure out our going places tools and then figure out what staying places tools we can fit in. They're appropriate everywhere, but they are usually not a top priority. In some places, however, that is a little bit different. So that changes in what we're calling our gathering locations, shown in red on that mobility framework that we looked at earlier. And it's kind of small up in the corner here. So gathering locations are some key locations throughout the city where we want to create a built environment that encourages people to stop and stay a while. In those gathering locations, we actually want to prioritize those staying places tools and then figure out what going places tools will work well, too. So it's probably too small to see here, but 38th Avenue from Wadsworth to Pierce is one of those gathering locations. So the direction then that we're talking about here, this aligns really well with that 38th Avenue refresh project on the east portion. And that effort isn't so much about the curb to curb, but it is about those staying places elements. So what does this look like for implementation? So if you recall those three goals from our overview, most of the mobility implementation is going to be under that goal of modern infrastructure. I'll touch on a few of those actions and strategies. Okay, so we've all been talking for a while now about wanting infrastructure, including that complete mobility network that works well now and into the future. One of the critical first steps in figuring out is figuring out how to pay for it. So that includes establishing a long-term capital improvement program funding source. That will also include prioritization. So one key input for prioritization that the plan notes is public input. Fortunately, we've gotten really good at this. So we want to make sure that the public input helps guide what projects will happen when. And we also want to be sure to report back to the community what we're doing, how that relates to their feedback and how we're coming along in this goal of modern infrastructure. Another key input for prioritization brings us back to that mobility framework. So we want to think about what gaps we have in this network as we prioritize projects. As we work towards this full network, which is a great goal line, but I think we all know that's that's not what the streets and sidewalks look like today, we want to start filling gaps around key destinations, including schools, trailheads, parks and open space, and those gathering locations. As for making these improvements, we want to tackle this from every angle that we can. So this means big projects like Wadsworth and 38th Avenue, both east and west. And it also means smaller projects like deploying 2J funds to fill those sidewalk gaps. It also means incorporating this into our routine maintenance. One example of that is looking for opportunities to add things like signage and striping during our ongoing repaving program. Okay, so that was the overview of mobility. We already talked about the implementation of mobility. So now I want to focus on some of those other topics that are going to really impact this group. So we're going to talk about rezonings and code amendments. First, we'll talk about city plan and rezonings. So the city plan includes a checklist shown here that walks us through what content from the plan is relevant for rezonings. We went through this in a lot more detail with Planning Commission on Thursday, but we'll just do a kind of higher level overview with you all tonight. So when we're considering a new rezoning case, we'll step through this checklist. First, how does a proposed rezoning relate to our core values? How about our planning principles? Does it align with what we are trying to achieve? For most rezonings, the two outcomes that we'll be talking about a lot are the evolution of places or allowing the city to grow and evolve while continuing to feel like Wheat Ridge, and peaceful coexistence between new development and existing neighborhoods. Then we'll look at context. So one piece of context is the place type map shown here. This tells us what place type, or in some cases, multiple place types would apply. We'll also check out our street types, since adjacency to different kinds of streets can actually impact what's appropriate on a particular site. The plan also asks us consider if any special cases are relevant. So special cases are included in the plan to address a handful of situations that require more nuance than the place type and street type framework alone can really fully address. So two examples of this are transition areas and then large civic institutional or agricultural reuse sites. So based on the context defined by place type, street type, and then sometimes also those special cases, the plan tells us what application of tools is appropriate in that particular context. So this will include a range of uses for those used tools. And then it will also specify treatments for things like setbacks, screening and buffering, and height, other things under the form tool category. So finally, the last item on our checklist is to evaluate any relevant goals, strategies and actions from our implementation chapter, which is chapter five and part three. So for proposals that, for example, enable a mix of housing, we might look at our actions under the strategy about supporting housing development to meet community goals. Okay, so now we want to touch briefly on implementing the city plan and what that means for code amendments. So one of our actions is to update the zoning code to align with the direction from the plan. This is the same checklist that we went through for rezoning and that also applies to our code amendments. So I won't step through it all again. But then there are a lot of other different topics that are mentioned in the whole city plan that may also require code updates. So that includes things like we're going to look at our use and form requirements in the zoning code to make sure that they can be appropriately applied by context in the way that is specified in the city plan. We're also going to talk about figuring out appropriate low-cost ways for businesses to grow. That could include things like removing barriers to flexible or even temporary uses. We want to look at whether there are proactive updates that we can make to regulations to enable housing near commercial as well as housing diversity and housing affordability. So those updates will also include things like parking requirements, when we require sidewalks, blocks to be constructed, and situations when we will be able to require additional review. So there are a lot of different pieces, a lot of little nuggets throughout the plan that would that do kind of stem back to our zoning code. So any update to that code would look at all those pieces. So we'd love to do this all tomorrow, but we also have to be realistic about how much time and resources this kind of update requires. So first, we want to focus on some quick wins. These would be updates that we can make to the code in the near term that don't require a ton of analysis or impact a ton of different changes throughout the code. And then in the longer term, we'd want to conduct a full audit and alignment of the code with this plan. So that would likely include refining our existing regulations. We might find that we need to create some new regulations if the ones we need don't exist. And then we'd also want to evaluate our zoning map to see if there are some proactive updates we want to make to that. So that is kind of the overview of code updates. So I've been talking for a really long time. Thank you for your attention and patience. The next time we see you all will hopefully be for the plan adoption. So based on that, we would love to hear from you from anything I've talked about or anything that you read on your own in the plan, anything that's, it's all fair game. We'd love to hear what's working well. Are there any missed opportunities? And does anything in there need adjustment? So I look forward to hearing your reactions to all this.
Ella, thank you very much. I'm sorry we don't have a bottle of oxygen here. Sorry to give you a hit there. Great presentation. Start with Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor. I really did enjoy reading all of this. This was really fantastic. Something that I've been thinking about was part three, planning for the unknown. And this might be something that you all can correct me if this is not an appropriate place to think of it. But something I've been thinking about a lot is this planning for the unknown. And I'm very proud of how we responded as a city and a council during that time and then through the attacks on Mr. Floyd in Minneapolis and then sort of what happened and how Wheat Ridge responded. You know, we now have this idea committee. And there were a lot of really, really positive things that came out of that, I'm going to call it, three years, right? That was pretty intense. And I was thinking about this last month, just in the very sad things that happened in the whole country in Texas. And of course, you know, we live in a community that has several waterways through it. We have a lot of flood district area. And we also have high potential for fire, just what we saw with Lewisville. And I am, and as you all know, it's something I think about. I have a farm with animals and so I think about emergency evacuation and all of these different things. But I'm just wondering if, you know, we don't know what's going to hit us. And in that moment, you know, while it's nice to have a decision-making framework, there's a lot of things that are happening. And one of the things that I think really helped us in that period was the fact that we had just hired a police chief who came from another part of the country, who had done a lot different kind of policing than we had seen, I think, in this area. And his leadership really, I think, helped us with that positive decision-making of how we moved through that time. And I'm wondering, we know what the possibilities are. You know, yes, we could have another pandemic, but yes, we could have a fire. And yes, we could have a flood. And yes, we could have a mass shooting. You know, we could have any of these things. We've seen them close by. We've seen them happen and they affect communities. And I'm just wondering if the plan deserves a little bit more time and energy towards the thoughtfulness of the things we know could happen and just, you know, and I'm also like, I'm one of these people who And I'm also like, I'm one of these people who grew up with tornado sirens, and I grieved the fact that we turned them off. I'm not complaining because I, I don't, I think that's an old system, not appropriate for the kinds of, you know, the kinds of things that we're dealing with now. But having the communication to our community of what to do when something like that happens. And I, and I even think about, you know, what happened in Boulder with the shooting at the grocery store. And that was a community thing that happened and, and really affected that area of the city for years to come and still does. And so I just feel like it might be worth having some thoughtfulness towards how we deal with these, the, the systems. Because there are systems we can have in place in, in terms of, you know, the thing that, that I keep reading about of regarding what happened in Texas was that the communication wasn't there. And there was just this lack of communication between state and county and, and, and federal and all of these different things. And I think we do that pretty well here. And, and it just, I think it would behoove us to maybe have those things known to people so that when these things happen, we don't have the flood of, and we will have a flood of phone calls here. But I, sorry, I will stop, but that's just what I was thinking about. The rest of it, I really, really, really thought was fantastic. Thank you.
Just to respond to that briefly, the county takes a real leadership role in emergency preparedness and hazard mitigation. So one of the things I think we could do to tie things together is cross-reference those adopted plans, which we participate in. So it may not feature as sort of a chapter in our, our city plan, which is usually more focused on land use and transportation. But because that effort has been made in collaboration with the county, we can include that for sure.
That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation, Ella. I do have just a couple of questions that are, I guess, more technical rather than kind of big picture. But so in Action H1, 1.1, it says that it's pilot a program for frontage improvements. We have a partnership that we give money to through our city budget, the Wheat Ridge Business District. And what, that's exactly what they do. They do facade improvements, they do large, large property improvements. Councilmember Stites and I believe Mayor Starker both sit on that board. So I don't know that that's something that we would have to maybe start from scratch, but potentially consider maybe, maybe sort of an addition or some sort of revamp of that. And then I wanted to ask, do, so several years ago, I brought about a change for special use permits where if there was a subarea plan, we require, it was added as a requirement for a special use permit that if there was a subarea plan, that the special use that was being requested fell in with, like aligned with the subarea plan. And I know we don't have subarea plans for everywhere. But I wonder if like the, the checklist, like is this checking the boxes checklist would be something that we would maybe want to consider adding as a requirement to our special use permit process?
Yeah, I mean, I think Lauren can definitely speak to the bigger picture. And I think that checklist is for once you're in, you know, once the code points you to the comprehensive plan. That's a little, it's almost like a, it's not a regulation, it's a cheat guide of like, hey, this is the big document here, the things you should think about.
Yes, so special use permits and rezonings, both criteria, we wrote it a little bit more broadly. It came up on 44th, I think. So that criteria says, the proposed special use promotes the goals and outcomes from applicable portions of the city's comprehensive plan and any subarea plan applicable to the subject property. So the new plan would apply, and you'd see us run through that similar checklist for an SUP.
Awesome, thank you. And then there, throughout the entire document, it says oftentimes like we need to have a CIP strategy. But there really is no like actual arrows pointing towards what that strategy should potentially look like. And so I guess my question is for, for Lauren and for Patrick, is this a CIP strategy, funding strategy? Is that something that we feel like we can, we can do that in-house? Like, is that some, something that we have the bandwidth, the skills and the, and the space to kind of work on that in-house?
Yeah, good question. And we, we discussed this earlier this afternoon. And I, I think we are doing those, some of that analysis right now. And there's been some recommendations or thought from council members on different options as well. It's honestly, when you start looking at it, it's not that complicated. It takes money to do things, right? You just got to figure out how to get that money. And so we are looking at, I think we can do it on our own, unless we want to get really complicated and look at very sophisticated impact fees, which we did talk about, I think, a couple of weeks ago, right? And I think that's something we are going to bring back. Probably we may need help with that because you have to do analysis to make sure there's that nexus, right?
Yeah, I think part of the reason this shows up, my take, you all get feedback from residents on infrastructure. Our bond approach has been really successful. We've built a lot of trust, we've got a lot of great projects done. But for the people whose project or sidewalk doesn't appear on that list, we aren't able to tell them when it might appear because we don't know if or when the next bond or any sustainable revenue source will be established. If we had the ability to have a sustainable revenue source, we'd have the ability to plan and prioritize a little further into the future and I think give people a lot more assurance of if not now, when. And so I think that is how that is meant to be perceived as if we have a little bit more ability to predict our funding, we'd have a significant we better ability to prioritize and predict out those projects too.
Thank you. And then one last question. When we were talking about like the code changes and there are some, some, some things we can sort of fast track, but then like a full audit is going to take a long amount of time. And, and so I guess my question is, is there a trigger? Do we, do we think that there's like a trigger point? And like what I'm thinking of specifically is like flag lots. So the last time we had a flag lot come before city council, there were people in the, in the neighborhood that did not want a flag lot, but we were following our policy. And, and I told those neighbors, like if you don't like flag lots, then what you need to do is come and request changes to the policy instead of just saying we don't like flag lots. So like if something like that comes up and, and we're like, oh, wow, this could really use new eyes, right? And this is something that we could change because things like that come up often, right? Is there like a, a trigger point that's going to be like, okay, well, let's put that into the kind of the fast track pile? Or like, is there something that we're, that you guys are looking at in the department that say, okay, maybe that needs to go over to the fast track and not wait until the end, the full audit?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. I don't think we've had sort of a good conversation around what is the rubric between putting something into quick or, or slow. We'll certainly bring sort of the full, our idea list to you all and, or to whoever seated as council at the time to say, you know, this is, we used to come, I think, annually and say, here's the code amendments. We're thinking about anything you want to add. We've been in such a triage mode of state required zoning code amendments lately that I think we're all really looking forward to being able to focus more locally, generate the list of likely code amendments, figure out, you know, how far reaching is it? How much public engagement is needed? And, and a variety of criteria that might make it land on the quick wins versus longer list. So we're not there yet, but we will be.
Great. And then the last thing I just want to say is in Action I, III, and you talked about an expedited review for, for, for projects that have affordable housing. And I just want to say, I've, I've been in several conferences with successful builders that build affordable housing. And their number one reason why they will go into a community and bring the affordable housing projects in that is because they basically have the expedited review, which they were calling the easy button, right? Like this people's easy button. So I'm really glad that we identified that in this plan. So thank you.
Thank you. We have Counselor Hulteen joining us online.
Thank you. Thank you, CZB. It's always fun to, to see draft versions of your work. I've got a couple of things here. So first of all, it's, it's a little bit all over the place. But I think one of the things that comes to mind listening or listening to this and reading the packet is a lot of this really does tie to that CIP strategy. And I know, Patrick, you just said that there's, you know, initial work that we're looking at right now, possibly tethering it to our stormwater issue that we're trying to deal with. But I, I think strategies for the CIP, like how we're going to go about doing it would be really helpful to have in there, not necessarily as prescriptive, but as, as just frameworks for understanding, in part because just, you know, the federal landscape and where we've been getting some of our more sort of like corridor investment funds is, is pretty uncertain. So I just want to flag that that CIP strategy is, you know, important regardless of updating the comp plan. But I think particularly in context of this compact, this comp plan with its, you know, places and whether you're sticking there or you're going through seems particularly important. Another thing I just want to flag that I did not get all the way into the weeds on the full draft. I did go through recommendations. But, you know, we have been talking, you know, especially in the last couple of months, about the significant reinvestment in facilities that's coming. And I guess I have a question about what, what is the nexus between the update to this sort of land use oriented comp plan and the city's facilities reinvestment strategy and priorities?
It's a good question. I mean, I think because the city plan is such a high-level document, I don't think most folks are thinking about specific parks or specific city facilities. I think we could probably extrapolate that there's a desire for us to modernize our service delivery, and that's sort of a part of it. But we haven't talked more specifically about weaving in the facilities master plan into the city plan because that document didn't really come from a public engagement effort.
Okay. I only mention it, yeah, I guess the public engagement piece would make it a little bit unique. But a lot of our priorities that we're going to be doing as a city for the next 10 years, 10, 15 years are going to be tied directly to this. And we do have things like 38th Avenue refresh. And so I just want to name that that facilities investment that we're looking at, both for possibly relocating City Hall and the other facilities reinvestments, just stands out to me as a significant thing we're going to have to try and solve for. And it does involve some land. Then you actually spoke to my next question, Lauren. Thank you. I was going to just talk about if we're going to be bundling updates or if they're going to kind of titrate out as needed. I like bundling when we're not trying to triage with state requirements that have been handed down to us, in part because of the complexity and interconnectivity of the different things that we're looking at. So understanding that's not a switch we can flip, but if we can turn the dial back towards more bundling, I think it's really helpful for thinking of it in the context of this particular new plan. And then, let's see here, a couple of secondary things that maybe aren't feedback for the plan, but I just want to kind of plant seeds with council is that this does end up brushing up against several other things that we deal with. We've already talked here about Planning Commission, decision-making. But there's other boards and commissions that this will touch. And so I'm sort of curious if there will be a phase after adoption where we see ourselves looking at how this touches other decision-making we do.
We certainly can. We, we are doing sort of a roadshow right now, post Lutheran. And I think one of the things that we've been talking about is what is, what does post-adoption look like after we sort of all sleep again and are not reading it all through editors' eyes and reading it through fresh eyes of who else do we need to go and talk to and make sure they're, they're looking at it through their respective lenses? So that's probably a post-implementation. I don't know if you've thought about that?
Well, and I think that the structure of the plan lends itself to that really well because it provides this kind of these goalposts of the values, the priorities and the principles that we can apply to, you know, whatever weird things happen in the future, but also other, other applications of this and, and thinking about, you know, things like the flag lots. I think that the structure that it forms is going to be a really helpful framework for all kinds of conversations.
I, I think of that worksheet that Ella had shared with you all as the equity lens that I think our idea committee had shared maybe with council and other staff and boards and commissions. So if it becomes the city plan lens, then yes, Counselor Hulteen, I think it does have application elsewhere too.
Great, I appreciate that. And I think just the, the last thing, and this has been alluded to a couple of times tonight, but, you know, the strength of this really is the community engagement. And I'm reminded when we adopted the NRS in 2019, you know, and how much community engagement went into that. But what came out of that was the Let's Talk program. And I'm really, you know, interested and excited to see after we adopt this, how we're looking to keep that dynamic engagement moving forward. We heard from Kathleen Martel tonight that, you know, that's, the, the input is what has led to, I think, such a creative and truly Wheat Ridge authentic update to our comp plan. And, you know, we have more sophisticated tools now. We have a lot of people who are talking, I think, in really generative and enthusiastic and cooperative ways about like how to be good partners in this. So I know it's not something we're solving for in, in this, but I just don't want to lose track of keeping that dynamic communication moving forward. So with that, unsurprisingly, just, I think this is really meeting the moment and really casting forward a vision of what we can accomplish if we really focus on solving some of these things. So thank you, everyone who's worked on this. And I am looking forward to seeing it come back to council in September.
Thank you.
Just to respond, I want to respond real quick to Councilwoman Hulteen's last point. I, I think it's a very, very great point. We've been talking about that, I think, a lot internally on what's, what's next for Wheat Ridge. We've been looking at also what have we done really well in the last several years? And community engagement is one of them with all the examples that you've talked about. So it's, it's very, very important in the front of all of our minds about what's next and how do we continue that? And all these planning efforts that we've been working on over the last couple of years, I think that's the next steps of, of all of those plans. And it may not look like Let's Talk exactly, but it's going to build on that, I believe. So it's a great point.
And Kathleen alluded to this in her comments, but we, we had a great conversation with the steering committee. Those kind of second half of our meeting was to discuss exactly that, both what, what can the city do moving forward? We were just curious to hear like what kind of information is helpful? How do you want to hear it? We got a lot of great ideas. And then also asking the committee, how, how can we, you know, help, help the community keep this momentum of these, you know, 18 community members on the steering committee and the 100 neighborhood champions? So the neighborhood engagement specialist, Ashley Holland and I are already generating our list of ideas. We're thinking about a story map where we can make the city plan really digitally accessible for people. So you could like click on one point on the map and figure out all the pages that are relevant to that and to just kind of report out on our implementation. So we're going to be coordinating with all the, the other folks who've recently finished plans to have kind of a unified and really accessible way to keep that conversation going.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Mayor Pro Tim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, well, I guess Kathleen and Counselor Hulteen and I were on the steering committee for the neighborhood revitalization in, in 2018, 19. And so I guess my questions were kind of along the same lines. But Lauren, one of the things you said earlier was, and, and I think Counselor Hoppe talked about it, the implement, implementation steps and, and trying to get some easy wins. And one of the things I think we want to make sure that we be careful of when we implement, there's stuff that looks easy on paper that we're like, oh, you just check that box, check that box, check that box. But then it gets into the community and, you know, so that community engagement piece as we move forward, that's a big part of this plan that I, I really appreciate in the, the core values. Because as Counselor Weaver said, we don't know what could happen. We don't know, but if we stick to our core values, we'll be able to, and we stick to that community engagement, our community will tell us the best way to move forward, I think. And, and continuing to have those conversations with our community and getting more creative with how we use those tools and, and, and be able to bring those, our, our residents in is, is really important because we don't know, you know, we can all think what it's going to look like in 10 years, but things will shift, right? And we don't know what that looks like. I do appreciate too with this plan that there's a, a, a big value placed on the business community because that's particularly where we're going to need to grow, I think, and, and really improve in the next couple of years. I think that's, our, our residents have kind of gained a lot of, of level, but our, our businesses really, I think, need a lot of help. And I think it's pointed out here a few times that they're stable, but they're not thriving. And I think that we need to get our business community to thriving and not, not even just worried about retail, but also start bringing in some bigger industries and things. some bigger industries and things like that, that we can look at employers and, and other things like that. So I appreciate CZB and, and our planning staff for this. This is a, a great document and I think goes a long way for the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman, or, yeah, Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, playing musical chairs tonight. So I just, I want to say I really appreciate that this plan is broad enough and not too prescriptive, but it also builds on a really strong foundation that, of, of systems and practices and policies that we've already created. I mean, we've done a wonderful job at updating and modernizing our code and we still have quite, quite a bit of work to do. But I just, I, I really appreciate how this all came together and how it's going to coincide with all of the other planning documents that, that we've been working on for several years. And it was an extremely robust public input process. I think the city has done a phenomenal job at going out to residents and seeking their input and feedback and then responding accordingly. And I think this is a really great, just overall picture of, of what that could look like. And I think we've done it very, very well. And I can't really say any, anything negative about the plan. I think it was really well, you know, accessible and, and laid out very well. And I, I love especially the going to places and staying in places because that's kind of something that we've had an issue with of people just driving through Wheat Ridge instead of stopping and kind of focusing and prioritizing those areas where we can maybe invest and attract some businesses that help people stay in the community and utilize our parks and amenities around there. And I, like, I recognize that we've really tried to implement a lot of mobility, bike and ped infrastructure. And, but we also recognize that cars are still the primary form of transportation and we leave room for that as well and talk more about the connectivity and allowing for people who live here and maybe want to get out of their cars and walk and how they get to and from places. So I really appreciate CZB just kind of leaning in and sticking with us and putting it all very, very well together.
Thank you. Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ella and the team for, for all your hard work. This is very robust and I know it was a long process. I just wanted to go back a little bit to our last idea committee meeting. You and Ashley were able to come and, and present to us. And I think our, our committee members really provided some, some good feedback and including not only the equity lens, but just some of, some things around ADA and, you know, accessibility and things like that. So I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate so much the time that you took to do that and, and get that take on it. And that's a conversation. It's not a one time thing. Please know that, you know, we would be open to having another conversation or having, having you back because I can tell you the committee really enjoyed having the ability to give that feedback. And, and it felt like a really good use of time and they felt very valued in that. So thank you for that. And I also just wanted to mention, we, I, I really do feel like, we've said this a lot and I, I say it a lot, it's really pretty hopeful. Wheat Ridge is growing and, in all the best ways, I feel like. And this plan just kind of puts us into the future and, and in a really, in a really good light. We are coming into our own and, and planning for the future and things like connectivity and things like, you know, equity and just overall mobility. I appreciate that. So kudos and thank you so much. Really appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
And thank you, Mayor. And first off, recognizing that this tremendous effort went into production of this 226 page document. And, and I did, I did get through most of it and I tried to count the number of times the word vibrant was used and I, I just didn't have enough ink in my pen. The, the themes for me that, that kind of jumped out that when you step back and, and, and kind of look at them in context of where we are today, and really this is, this is a snapshot, a very valuable snapshot of where the city of Wheat Ridge is in 2025. The, the themes that I, I would like to, and I'm not sure how we would alter these, but when we talk about bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, we are also talking about safer streets. And it's been pointed out to me that when you have safe access for bicycles and pedestrians, you also have safer motorized traffic as well. And I'd, I'd like to see somehow recognition in, in the document that the, the, one of the goals, one of the things you can achieve with a, a built out infrastructure for bicycles and pedestrians is safer streets all around. And given that Wheat Ridge is a transportation nexus for much of the Denver metropolitan area, we need to recognize and recognize very clearly that there are a lot of cars and trucks and motorcycles driving through our streets all the time. And we continue to have serious accidents on some of our major streets. And we need to recognize this as part of who we are. Because we have these two major corridors running through our city, we need to be active participants in how the, the issue of traffic safety for everybody, not just for our residents, but for the people that are passing through our community, how we are recognized that it's important for them to travel through Wheat Ridge safely, recognize that there are issues we need to be addressing regarding traffic safety. And to me, that gets back to this general quality of life issue that, that keeps coming up in a whole bunch of different ways for different parts of Wheat Ridge. We talk about a, a patchwork and, and Wheat Ridge really is a, a city of neighborhoods. That quality of life issues keep coming up again, whether it's, whether it's noise, whether it's traffic congestion, whether it is speeding or accidents or whatever it is, these sorts of things have to be recognized going forward. I did also note a couple of things here that kind of jumped out at me. One reference was that it, as our residents ask for more services and more parks and more things that, that, that can improve the quality of life, it equates, the equation there is with more services are, are going to require more growth. And, and I think the recognition, and it is made a couple of different places in the document, that the, the issue of growth and the fact that the city of Wheat Ridge will have to, will have to grow, will have to welcome new citizens and new businesses in order to provide the level of services that our, our residents are asking for. Other than a couple of, oh, we, there was a reference in a couple of different places to coordinating infrastructure projects with the utilities. I, I believe that would be, it, it, it sounds like a good idea, but it, it, it will probably also be very difficult because the utilities have, have their own agendas and things that are of interest to them. And coordinating with them may be a little tougher than, than it, it's, than it is on paper. So it is something we will have to recognize that we may have to take a, a bit of a firmer hand in dealing with the, the utilities that provide services throughout the city. And, and then, and finally, I, I did, I do recognize several different places where the, the under the ground infrastructure, specifically stormwater and some of the utilities, we, the, the references to deferred maintenance. And I, I think it, it is important that we recognize that a lot of this maintenance has been deferred and that's why we are having to do a lot of emergency repairs right now. But when we, we refer to deferred maintenance, there isn't the sort of second part of that sentence. And that is, how do we avoid deferred maintenance in the past? Because obviously we've gotten to where we are today because of decisions that were not made in the past. Other than that, again, I, I believe it's a very vibrant document and I think, I think it, it does bode well for the city of Wheat Ridge if, if this thing comes together and provides the guy, the guidepost for, for the city plans down the road.
Thank you for those comments. I have a couple of responses. So you first mentioned the bike and ped and the safer streets. Actually, we had a really similar comment and conversation at Planning Commission last week. And actually, this morning I was adding some language to our comments to send back, to speak a little more explicitly to that connection to all the folks traveling by vehicle. So first, to acknowledge that frustration that we have heard a lot about traffic and safety. And then to just connect those dots, you know, we, we have some really helpful sections in this plan that give that background narrative. I know me, I, I started right before this plan, so I've had a lot of questions that I've been asking Lauren of like, wait, which plan on 38th? Like, why are we so, you know, I think there's just a lot of history that it's hard to piece together. So we've been trying to weave those narratives so that we have in one place, like, why are we still talking about this? Well, here's why. Here's where, you know, here's the past, present and our ideal future. So in that section, I've added some, some content about, that, that acknowledges that, that struggle and also talks about what you alluded to that safer, you know, if streets are safe for our most vulnerable uses or users, they're safer for drivers. And that one of the most, in, in a situation, in an environment like Wheat Ridge, the, one of the most effective ways that you can help address traffic is by shifting as many trips as possible so that the folks who need to drive or still choose to drive have, you know, fewer cars that they're competing with on the road. So that is something I can tell you is, is already in the works to, to speak to that more explicitly. And then I think the, just your, your comments on the deferred maintenance really brought me back to Lauren's earlier comments of that, that ongoing CIP fund so that we can anticipate things and build in that maintenance so that we just don't find ourselves back in this position.
Thank you. I don't have any more counselors wanting to speak, but I'm going to throw in just a couple of cents because it's, while you come. Great report. I did not get through the whole report. I did, you did give us the courtesy to give us executive summary enough time that I could sort of went through it in, in detail. I thought it was really good. I thought, you know, making, place making and, and, and how you get to places, I think are very important kind of keys that, that happen. Sort of to, to Councilor Larson's point, the only thing that I looked at is that every time I saw bicycle more easily, I would have put more safely and easily. So just, just sort of to combine those two thoughts that, that it's not just ease of operation, but it's the safety and it's not only the bicycles, bicyclists, but it's pedestrians and it's the motoring public. And, and I think we, we all want everyone to be safe in our towns. So, but I think it's an excellent report. A lot of, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to pull it out of my, out of my notebook here and, and put a, put a binder on it and then, you know, probably get another pair of reading glasses. But I want to thank you, Ella and, and Lauren and your, and our partners at CZB. Thank you all for, for being here tonight. Thank you for your continued input to, to council, the coming back and, and not only gathering input from the public, but being, being really, really gracious and, and sharing with us. So thank you very much. Unless there's any other, any other last minute thoughts from anybody, I want to thank you very much for coming tonight. We look forward to seeing this plan adopted.
Great. Thank you. And then we just have our quick overview of this. Just a reminder that our public comment does close tomorrow. So if you or anyone else wants to share additional thoughts, we'll be able to incorporate them if we have them by the end of the day tomorrow. And then, yeah, we look forward to be back, being back here. So far, we're on track for that early September adoption date. And I look forward to hopefully soon after that, being back for some of those quick wins and some of those other early implementation actions. So thank you so much and we'll see you in September.
Thank you very much.
Right on, right on time.
It's actually pretty darn good. Is that an hour?
Yes. This will be much more expeditious. All right. Thank you, Lauren. All right. Take Okay, we are going to move now to agenda item number two. This is a discussion on draft ballot language for a charter amendment relative to the clerk and the treasurer's elected positions. So Mr. Goff, do you want to start us off on this one?
I will. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. As, as you know, we've been talking about this, this item, this topic for on and off for several years. And most recently at a study session in May and I think at a retreat, remember, did we talk about it at the retreat? Councilor Retreat? 100 years, we've been talking about this. So for the public's sake, maybe just real quick, Wheat Ridge's city charter does require that our city clerk and our city treasurer are elected. That there is, it's very few other communities in Colorado that require that. There's two or three others that do that for the city clerk and I think maybe only one or two for the city treasurer. So it's very unique in Wheat Ridge. And we did receive consensus from city council, I think in May at a study session for the city attorney to draft language for a potential question this November. Staff did work with Mr. Dahl on that process. And before we bring this forward in ordinance form, we wanted to make sure that you are comfortable with the language as written. So that is provided in your memo and then also the draft ordinance was provided as attachment. And I say our city treasurer is here if he wants to participate at all. But with that, Dahl, Mr. Dahl, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Please, yes. If the city treasurer could join us, that'd be even better. There's only, only three sections in the charter that are implicated by this, by this change. There's 3.7 is election city clerk, 3.9 is treasurer, and then there's a, a section as part of the vacancies, filling vacancies section of the charter, 311, that relates to the vacancies in the office of city clerk or treasurer. And of course, those would go, that subsection would go away. You might be interested to know that A and B are about vacancies in the office of mayor and vacancies in the office of council member. And so those are retained. In sort of designing the question, I really got quite a bit of help from Ally Scheck, who suggested that we tighten up the language a little bit so that rather than saying, you know, eliminate this office and then separately eliminate that one, we were able to combine it and make it, I thought, I thought a lot more streamlined and understandable. Shall the, the charter be amended to eliminate the elected positions of clerk and treasurer? And then, of course, you have the mechanics of that effective on a vacancy occurring. And of course, in the case of the city clerk, we presently have a vacancy for November 2, whichever comes first. And then it would just be automatic after that. The only necessary conforming change would be the, the section that I mentioned, deleting section 311c. That's, that's it. Be happy to answer questions.
Councilor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't really have any questions. I do just want to first start by saying Treasurer Miller, it's been such a joy to have you. And you have done an amazing job. And I just want to make sure that our community understands that this is not something we're doing because we don't like Treasurer Miller in his position and, you know, our, our previous city clerk. This is definitely something that we're doing so that we can make sure that we have the ability to hire professionals into these positions because an election doesn't necessarily mean that they're qualified. We got very lucky. The Treasurer Miller is qualified and very qualified and I hope he'll stay until 2027. But I think the language is, is clear. I think it's direct enough that I don't think that, that it will be, it could be misconstrued or could be twisted in, into any sort of conspiracy theory. or could be twisted in, into any sort of conspiracy theory. And so I just want to say that I'm, I'm in favor of the language and the reason why we're moving this way.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Oh, I can make it into a conspiracy theory. Just give me a couple of minutes. Yeah, I won't. No, I also just wanted to thank our current treasurer for the amazing work that he does and that he will continue to do it through the end of his term. And, and just acknowledge that, again, we are not doing this, as Counselor Hoppe said, because of any misdoings or any lack of professionalism or anything like that. In fact, quite the opposite. I think we would have a really hard time finding someone so qualified to, to continue with what he's doing. So I'm just gonna make him blush. So, anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Miller.
Counselor Larson.
And thank you, Mayor. And I also support the direction that, that we want to go with this, with this ballot question. The only question I have is, do we need to specifically say that if we eliminate these positions, they will be filled with, by, you know, professionals? Yeah, does it need to say that the, the roles will be filled by city staff?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a fair question. Right now, what we have is a thinking out loud for the answer. So what, what we have now is city clerk must be elected, city treasurer must be elected. And then the rest of the charter and other provisions charter and in the code say, here are the duties of the clerk and here are the duties of the treasurer. Not unlike the duties of the police chief, who's not at all mentioned in the charter, not at all, you know, like other, other staff. We do have a provision, a charter that, that puts the, the hiring and supervision of all employees under the city manager. So I would take the position that if there's not an elected clerk or treasurer, then the default really is, like any other employee who is appointed, that employees, with the exception of myself and the judge, et cetera, are, are appointed by the city manager and that the otherwise authority, the existing authority in the charter and the code for the manager to hire, discipline, fire employees would then apply to what amounts to now a non-elected appointed position.
To follow that up, do we, do we know if other municipalities describe the role that, that would be, that the role would be filled, I guess?
Fair enough. I have to look at some city charters, but over the years, I've represented a bunch of home rule cities and statutory and where they're, and none of them had elected the city clerks or treasurers. And occasionally, the charter will refer to that position, especially for city clerk with no pejorative intended of the treasurer. But because city clerk, you know, their job is implicated in initiative and referendum and elections and forms and all sorts of things, home rule charters tend to describe their duties and some of their key functions generally. But in those cities where there's not an elected city clerk, those charter provisions don't go on to say, and the city clerk is appointed by the manager, because it would be unnecessary. You'd have to go in and say, all the other employees are appointed and name them by the, by the manager.
So then that, that role, the role that's currently billed by the clerk and the treasurer, the roles.
Yeah.
Could be, that, that role could be split in half. And you could have somebody doing a part of what the clerk does now and another person doing, in maybe a different department. So it would be pretty much up to the city manager to decide what, what the role looked like.
I think that's right. If the change were made, we'd end up with a charter that says, these are the duties of the city clerk and some other references to city clerk in elections and initiative referendum, and there's a whole section that just says the city clerk should keep forms necessary for certain things. I'd see no problem with, again, if this were approved, the city manager saying, the office of the city clerk will do these three things, and these other four things that are assigned to the clerk under the charter shall be performed by XYZ employee acting as the city clerk for that purpose. I want to make sure that where the charter says this is a clerk duty, the, the manager, even when, if this were approved, would have to. And the manager wanted to assign, make up an example, of, of keep, the keeping of the forms, it's a pretty easy one, to the, the city's PIO. The manager would, and I would ask the manager to make that assignment in the name of the city clerk. So I'm hereby assigning you PIO to act as the city clerk for the purpose of charter section two point, whatever it is, the keeping of forms. And then you, you've maintained it as a city clerk function as the charter requires, but it can be performed by others so long as they're wearing a designated city clerk hat by the manager for that purpose.
Treasurer Miller. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dahl, what about other sections of either the charter or the code that refer to the treasurer position? Do those need to be taken into consideration? And how would, if voters were to approve this referendum, be addressed in updates of the charter and code itself?
Good question. And when I was first given this task, I thought, oh, boy, there's going to be a lot of sections I'm going to have to mess with. And then I realized that, that those other sections don't implicate an elected clerk or treasurer. They say the clerk shall do this, the treasurer shall do this. And I, I thought, am I crazy about this? So I went, I, I went through really carefully to find whether there was a reference in the charter that, other than these three sections that I've called out, that, that required the, or that implicated the clerk as being the elected or the, or the treasurer as being elected. And no, because it really assigns duties and jobs and authorities. But if you kind of put on the lens of, okay, we've got an appointed clerk, will an appointed clerk be able to do all those things? And is there any confusion when the charter says the clerk and city manager is appointed, person X, as the clerk? Will that person be able to do that job? Is there any lack of clarity around the fact that that person's no longer elected? And I didn't find that. You're asking the right question, though, because at first, I had a much longer list of sections, I thought, I'm going to have to repeal this out and repeal that out. The more I thought about it, I felt, you know, a lot of cities, home rule cities have non-elected and appointed clerks, and they have charter provisions that create all these duties. So what was holding me up was continuing to think about all the references being electives because ours is now. But once you remove the sections that are clearly elective, it reads like any other home rule charter that refers to clerk, and a few of them refer to treasurers, not as many, I confess, but some do.
And then having said that, I, I see that, you know, we have a hired city employee as a clerk right now, but there is no one in a position as treasurer. Like, I'd assume, based on what you're saying, that Patrick, a city manager, would have to identify someone as the treasurer such that we have continuity within the code?
Yes, because the, the, for the code, you could, you could do an amendment, the code amendment, to sort of eliminate the term. But the term remains in the, in the, in the charter. Unless we were to repeal more of the charter around duties of the treasurer, we would still need an appointed treasurer. Honestly, that could still be, and using the example I used earlier, and answer the question by Councilmember Larson, it could still be person X. It could still be, and it wouldn't be, don't get me wrong, it wouldn't be the public information officer. But again, you create a little record by the manager who's got the power to now appoint the treasurer, and then, and the manager would say, I hereby appoint PIO to perform the functions of treasurer. Quite likely, and as I think we understand, that, that appointment would be, I hereby appoint a, a person to be, to conduct the functions of the treasurer, although, per your question, there's, that would not prevent the manager from dividing that function so long as it's still a treasurer function, just like I suggested and answered, Councilmember Larson, that the manager could divide the clerk functions and assign them so long as he's saying, you're wearing a clerk hat when you're doing this, you're wearing a treasurer hat when you're doing this, and keeping that record clear.
Thank you. Appreciate the answer.
Good questions. Additional questions or discussion on this item? Okay, do we have a, did I hear some? Oh, Rachel, Counselor Hulteen, did you have a?
Thumbs up, she said.
Oh, okay. So we're, I think, looking for not only feedback, but probably a consensus to move this to the, this would come back as a motion to council?
Yes, it would. As an ordinance? It'd come back as an ordinance, first reading, and for your information, section three has the effective date being upon adoption, as is often, it is not an emergency, but upon adoption, saving that 15 days.
Okay. Do we have consensus to move this forward?
We do.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Any other, anything else? Is that it? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our two study items for tonight. We will go to whatever's next on my agenda, and I'll get there. Staff reports, Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. We spoke about quality of life a little bit this evening with our city plan. I think you all remember, we are working on an issue in the, in the community that has impacted quality of life, and that's the Silver Bullet on 38th Avenue. And if you remember, we did a environmental acoustical assessment to determine if any improvements could be made to the building to help dampen the noise, and there were some suggestions. And just wanted everybody to know that that work is going to be starting on July 28th. So also, we have engaged with a broker to help us sell the Town Center Park and the former Raleigh-Burton site on Wadsworth. That's right in front of Town Center Park, and we purchased that for the Wadsworth project. We've already, I think we just put them, put it out, the marketing brochure out last week. We already have interest from two folks. You may recall that the city charter does require, requires approval by ordinance of three-fourths of the entire city council to sell municipally-owned real property and unanimous approval to sell designated parkland. We did remove through the county, we got the reverter removed off Town Center Park, but I think it's still probably considered parkland. So just so that we're ready when we do, if and when we have a contract to, to sell these properties, to bring them back, I would like to get your approval to bring forward these ordinance, ordinances to get permission to sell both parcels. So just looking for kind of a head nod, and we'll bring those forward in the next couple meetings.
Do we have consensus there to, to do that?
I have a quick question.
Okay. Oh, question.
Yeah, just on the, on the, on the parkland piece, is that unanimous of council that are present? Or do we have to have the entire council present to get a unanimous vote? Because I feel like we've had this discussion before.
Yeah, I looked it up earlier, and I guess I didn't write the whole thing down. It's unanimous of the entire city council for the municipally-owned property. I can't remember if it said, that had the same language for parkland. Remember what sections in?
Because I, I feel like in the past, we've looked at this and everybody had to be present for the vote.
In both cases, three-fourths of the entire council, regular land announced, we will buy, uphold the entire council.
Okay. So, yes.
Both cases, an ordinance, three-fourths for.
So I'm just bringing that up because I want everybody to be clear that, that, that'll be an important date to make sure that we can all be out.
Counselor Weaver.
I was just curious, are, will those parcels be sold separately? Or are they going to be put together as one parcel? And how big is that parcel? How much land are both parcels together? I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah. First question, they'll be sold together.
They will.
Yeah. And not sure if I have it, may have it here real quick. If you have, give me a second. It is just over an acre for.
It's a decent size.
For both parcels, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
It's just such a very small park. So I perceived it as a very small piece of park.
Yeah. What else? That's it. I think we got a thumbs up to bring, bring this forward when we, when we can, to get these, that, at least that piece done. When and if there's a contract to sell, that'll come back separately for you to see as well.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Item number four is elected officials' reports. So is anyone reporting out on anything tonight? Okay, Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. I was really excited to see in the news this week about the American motel. I know you gave us an update, but it was really exciting and, and I loved the memo that you sent out, so appreciate it.
I think it's going to be on Fox News as well.
Okay.
Making rounds. Yeah, was it on, right?
All right. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And this last Thursday, I had the, the distinct privilege to cut the ribbon or help cut the ribbon at Timeless Today. This is a, a business that grew out of a, a previous business called Timeless Travel Trailers that specialized in modernizing, customizing, and repairing airstream travel trailers. And if you know anything about the RV business, airstreams are kind of the crème de la crème, the best, the top. And when you have a company in your community that has almost the exclusive right to take a shell of an airstream and turn it into something very cool, that's, that's pretty special. Timeless Today is located at 12200 West 52nd Avenue in, out near the Ward Station. Their dedication to customizing, repairing airstream trailers brings a unique blend of innovation, artistry, and Colorado spirit to our city. The owners, Meg Chamberlain, Jeff O'Day, and Dave Baldini, are, are the kind of entrepreneurs that we like to see in our city, and I wish them nothing but the best. The other item I have to just bring up tonight, on Saturday, at my wife's direction, we attended the Elemental Theater Company's fundraiser that took place at the Active Adult Center. While I'm not a fan of show, show, show tunes, musicals, that's, that was on the agenda. And, and it was, again, not a fan of show tunes, but it was a very entertaining evening, and I wish the folks at Elemental Theater Company, which kind of rose from the ashes of the Wheat Ridge Theater Company, I wish them the best and that they are successful in, in, in their direction. They, they say their goal is to produce high-quality plays, musicals, dramas, comedies, shows, and exhibitions. We believe that performances, performance arts are better served by providing quality entertainment, not only to the general public, but to underserved areas with inclusive performers and staff. It was a very entertaining, a very entertaining evening.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor. Last week, Counselor Dozeman, Treasurer Miller, and I were all at Margie Cypher's house, District Three, for the Wheat Ridge Business Association mixer. And I just got to tell you, I don't, if you've never been to Margie's house in District Three, she has a beautiful garden, she's usually on the garden home tour, but it was fantastic. So thank you for hosting that to her, and thank you to Cheryl Garcia for presenting that. Appreciate it.
Terrific. Additional reports? Don't see, uh, don't see any? Okay. So that pretty much concludes our meeting tonight. We will be back here next week at?
Regular meeting.
6:30 for a regular meeting. So until then, please drive slowly and safely through our city so everybody gets home safely and sound. So thank you all for joining us tonight, and we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
Bye, Rachel.